We're going to go ahead and get started with our work session. Mr. Coleman?
Yes, ma'am. So I am here today as the president of the Order of One Place of the Shoals. And that's a, just to give you a little history, I mean, we opened in October of, took the 10 years, October of '14. The building is jointly owned by the city and the county. Since we have been there, we've had roof problems. We've repaired, we've done whatever we did repair, and it's come time to replace the roof. We initially, initially met with the maintenance man at the county, Ricky Pettis, and I put two proposals in front of you. The first one is a Duralast. That's a roof that was used to put on the, the city-county government building. I frankly thought that was really pricey. So we reached out to Henderson Roofing and got a second quote. And then I have that in front of you. So we are asking that the city pay its half of the repair or the replacement of the roof. I met with the city attorney and with the county attorney in terms of, is this a legal obligation of the city and the county? Given the fact that it's a repair, I mean, it's not a repair, it's a replacement. It's something the owner has to do. I met with the county in their work session yesterday. I gave you a copy of their resolution where they have agreed to take the bull by the horns, I guess you'd say, and handle the project and then contingent on the city payment's half. The urgency of it is this, we, we've been fooling with it a long time. I started getting these quotes in February. All this rain we've had, one of the things we have at One Place that doesn't get a lot of publicity is the computer forensic lab, where we've got probably maybe $120,000 worth of forensic equipment in there that does cell phones and those kinds of things that's used in all our big cases and some of the little cases, but gotta have it, doesn't need to get damaged by water. And I don't know if you're familiar with that building, but that wing is, is where the, is leaking. I've got some pictures on it. I'm not going to bore you with that, but I mean, it's on that hallway now. So the hope is that y'all will approve it. We can get it to the, go back to the county and get them, get them going on it. It's public work and under $100,000, so it doesn't require a good process.
Chris, of course, I was on the board there for a few years. I don't remember how much. Enjoyed it immensely, but that is one thing that we even dealt with back then.
Right.
Refresh my memory, is that a sloped roof or is it flat?
It's a flat roof.
So is it going, are they going to make it sloped or?
They're going to slightly slope it, as I understand it.
Okay.
Much better than what we've got now.
Yeah, okay.
And this is the price, the $7,000.572 for a, the entire, the entire roof?
That's right.
Not partial price.
And I think Henderson Roofing, local company, I mean, they're, they're doing it at a massive discount. I mean, as you can tell, this, this Duralast thing is $189, and they're doing it for 70, so much appreciated for them, local company, trying to help out the good folks at One Place Roofing.
Is this something we vote on now or is it on the, to see, is it on the agenda tonight?
It is, he's on work session.
I know it's on the work session.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, Billy, do we need to vote on this now to move forward on this?
Well, if the county, if the county's willing to move forward with y'all, with a vote now, then I can do a formal resolution for the next meeting, or I could do one for tonight if I need to walk that process through.
Next meeting.
Sounds to me like we need to move on this and not wait another two weeks.
We'll move on it, but we can get it for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think y'all can go ahead and vote, and then I can affirm it with a resolution.
Well, Chris asks his question all the time, so don't feel singled out. We're getting so close to the end of the budget year, which obviously is the end of September, and Shane is not here, I wish he were, where I could ask her a question. There may be funds in the current budget that'll carry this that haven't been spent that will be available, but if not, you know, I would love to try to work it into that budget, but how detrimental is that timeline?
It's pretty, I mean, it's pretty desperate. I mean, I've got, you know, the pictures are, are this.
You don't have to show, I just, I trust your judgment.
It's on fire.
Okay.
I think if the, I think if the computer room wasn't, you know, in, in danger of being, you know, really hit with some damage, Mike could put it off a little bit, but.
Right. You know, if we were just over there doing the victim services, that's one thing, but I mean, just to give you an example of how critical that piece of that work over there is, that horrible murder we had recently with a girl got run over by the car. The first thing she lost when he ran up, hit her the first time was her cellphone. So they, they started that investigation by finding the cellphone, didn't know where she was, got that to the folks at One Place, and you know, here we go. We're knocking on that guy's door at 2:00 in the morning, and he's in jail now where he's supposed to be. So, you know, it's critical.
Okay. Well, it's $35,350.
That's right.
So I feel like Shane can, you know, we can wait till the next council meeting or.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's a couple of weeks. I mean, I, I mean, what I would like to do is, is, you know, let the roofing people know, hey, this is going to happen hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Right.
And let them kind of be getting in the, getting in the mode to get going, and then y'all can approve it in the due course.
I thought Billy said you could go ahead and.
Yeah, I thought Billy said we could go ahead and vote tonight.
We're going to vote tonight, but it'll come on the next, resolution will come at the next council meeting.
Yeah, but if we voted to go forward with it, at least you could be getting your ducks in a row.
Yeah, that's what he, yeah, that's what he said.
Okay, I got that.
Right.
That'd be okay.
Motion to me to.
Okay, motion by Mr. Albert.
I second that.
Second by Jackie Anne Blake, and me, all in favor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, Chris.
Thank you for what you do. One Place is really a phenomenal organization.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there only one other in the state or something or?
Well, there's two now. I mean, I, I tell this story all the time, when I ran for office 20 years ago, I've talked about our area being a model for other areas to replicate, and it's happening. So we were the second, and Jefferson County's now come up here and looked at ours, and others are looking at it. So it's a beautiful thing. So thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Talking about victim services, I'm from Kramer Children's Center, and we support the children in our area who have been victimized by abuse or witnessed violence. And I'm coming to you today, and I've left a packet for each of you, to respectfully request your consideration in increasing the city of Florence's support for Kramer Children's Center for this next fiscal year from $5,000 to $20,000 in the upcoming year. To date, Kramer Children's Center, since we started in 1992, we have not had an increase in funding from the city of Florence. And then we have to date 2009, but I've never found before that, we haven't received any additional funding. In just the past six months, 104 children living in the Florence City Limits came through our doors to receive the healing services they needed after experiencing abuse and neglect or witnessing violence. These children received their forensic interviews, therapy sessions, medical exams, and advocacy, all at no cost to the families. And altogether, we provided 2,120 healing services to 381 children in our region during the first half of this year. So we service Florin, or Lauderdale, Franklin, Culver, and Lawrence Counties. So we're the only child advocacy center in that area. We have, we are accredited by the National Children's Alliance, as well as the Alabama CAC. And in the past six months, we've provided 18 medical exams, 285 therapy sessions, 442 victim advocacy and referral services, and 1,235 criminal justice support interventions. Unfortunately, we're currently facing a significant funding shortfall due to federal VOGA, which is the Victims of Crime Act cuts, which have impacted child advocacy centers across the country. And this coming fiscal year, we're facing a potential loss of up to $96,000 in federal cuts. And on the second page, you can see that we have received cuts from, at a federal level, every year since 2021. Our largest being in 2023 fiscal year at 27.4% cut, and that's a cut from the previous year. These reductions have limited our ability to fully staff our programs and expand services to meet the growing needs in our community. The need is great, and without local investment, we risk having to scale back at a time when more children than ever are depending on us. With this request, I've also included a memo from the National Children's Alliance, of which Kramer Children's Center is an accredited member. This memo includes our current needs at a national level to fund child advocacy centers and the shortfalls we face if we don't receive the level of VOGA funds we've received in years past. Your passports made a lasting difference in the lives of children in Florence, and we're so grateful. However, today, we're asking for your help in a more significant way. An annual $20,000 in city funding would allow us to serve Florence families better, restore vital services impacted by federal cuts, and ensure that no child slips through the cracks. And I provided also our six-month report in there, so you can see all of the services, services that we provided. We would love to have you guys come over for a tour. We're just right down the street, 404 West Tennessee Street. I'd love to show you what we do there, if you have not toured our facility in the past. Do any of y'all have any questions about Kramer Children's Center, what we're dealing with right now with the, with the cuts?
What are the funding do you have, what are the funding sources do you have other than city Florence or other?
We're a United Way partner, so we receive funds from them. We also have funds at a state level, but the majority of our funding comes from those federal funds, and we're trying to ramp up our support in the community. But there's a list on here as far as our local donors that you can see. We do receive some municipal, municipal support, but it's definitely just a drop in the bucket at this point.
Getting grant villages?
Yes, we, we're applying for some new grants this year, the Children's Trust Fund Grant, and we're waiting to hear back from them in, at the end of August.
Did you say other municipalities than the Shoals give you?
Yes, so for, for example, the city of Russellville provides us $13,000 a year.
Muscle Shoals, Tuscaloosa?
Muscle Shoals provides $1,000 a year.
How much?
$1,000. And I, I went to their council meeting last night to discuss an increase in funding from them as well. So we're asking for increases from all the municipalities that we serve. There are some municipalities that haven't been reached out to, so I'm reaching out to all of them. But the city of Florence, with us having our home base here, I, I would really appreciate some support locally, like some additional funding to be able to operate here in Florence and help the kids here. We do see the majority of our kids come through Florence.
So I think on our non-governmental appropriations, there's an annual application process, correct? Have y'all started that and submitted that to the city? And that may be a question for someone else in your office that takes care of that.
She did, she did send her letter requesting, and then I did send it on up to Shane.
Okay.
So she asked what you.
And you'd had the increase request in there, I'm sorry.
You had the documents that you sent to Shane.
I, I sent a letter. I don't know if you passed, was there a formality?
I'd like you to give all those documents to Shane too, and I'll give them to her if you want.
Do you?
The page you got.
This.
If you want. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you. Bill?
This is about a drainage project that y'all are probably familiar with, Berry Avenue, on the eastern end, and Bauer, Dryden, and Duff are fairly close. There was a drainage problem of, you know, a couple of properties, and, you know, this, this project was done to kind of mitigate, you know, the problems with drainage that these properties were, were experiencing. And final change order, you know, during the course of the project, there were two change orders that added on, but the final change order, you know, was a subtraction. So the final contract amount is $277,863.
So this change order is a minus.
Pardon?
This change order is a credit.
Uh, no, the, there were three change, uh, change orders. The last one was a credit. The other two, you know, were just additions.
Do you have any questions, Paul?
Motion?
Mm-hmm.
Left motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Oliver, all in favor of motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mason?
I got item 11I, this is payment for invoice for Surf Pro. We had a emergency water leak that happened over the Juneteenth holiday. We came back that Friday, and our office was flooded, engineering was flooded, and it was dripping on Bob Lott's desk. So we had to, we had to call in Surf Pro. They brought in about four dehumidifiers and 25 fans, and they ran for about three days getting that cleaned up, so.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
You can explain it now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Good afternoon, how are y'all today? We've got one item, this is item 11L. This is a facilities use and dentum agreement with UNA. This will help with their liabilities since they are self-insured. Any questions on the document? Mr. Musgrove and their, their attorney have both looked at this.
Is that any facility or?
Yes, sir, it lists out educational, community centers, meeting rooms, athletic fields, courts, auditoriums, event spaces, and parking spaces.
Any additional questions, Paul?
Thank y'all, have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs?
Good afternoon. The first item I have is a change order for our contract with Three Knots Group, formerly CDG. This is a transfer station design. Upon our kind of change in what we wanted and so forth, the geotechnical aspect of it, which was originally proposed to be a $30,000 study, has gone to cost about $35,000. So they're going up to $5,000 on the geotechnical part of this contract. So that makes the overall contract go from 175 to 180. Any questions on that? Y'all want to vote on that?
Yes.
We don't.
We got a grant.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Hendricks, all in favor.
Thank you. The next item is, is C on the consent agenda. This is invoice from Keaton Electric. They ran the conduit and hooked up all the wiring so that we could have a gate excess at the new fuel center, across the street from Recycle Center. That was, so the carb readers go in, so now an employee can wait for their car to get in the gate, even down 24/7. So of course, it's over there today. Question on that one? All right, next is D, and this is the contract with Southern Environmental Engineering, a local company. They have just completed the permit for Culver County's air curtain incinerator, and so in shopping around the price here, we were going to let Three Knots Group do it, but I contacted these guys, I'd do it for about that price, and so proposing the contract with them to do the permitting for the incinerator that will go out to burn the wood waste at Starkey Drive property. That's each $500 for them to do the permitting part. Any questions for me on that one? Thank you.
Good for Rich.
Oh, by the way, you saw the numbers from the Household Hazardous Waste Safety, very good event, very popular event. We got a lot of thank yous for doing that event, even Mr. Musgrove was appreciative. And turned out great, we got, we collected a lot of stuff, and so we appreciate everybody to help sponsor and help pull that up.
This once a year, right?
Hopefully, yes.
Hopefully, okay, thank you.
Hopefully, we'll do it next year.
Thank you, appreciate you. Well.
Good afternoon, council members. The gas, water, and wastewater department has two items on tonight's agenda. The first is a gas department. Item, it's item 11E, it's an agreement with S.J. Patterson Company for, to perform tapping and stopping work on the high-pressure natural gas main on Chisholm Road in the area of the Oaks apartment development. A local developer is developing a set of apartments there, and his entrance requires that the high-pressure natural gas main be relocated. He will reimburse the gas department once the work is completed. Cost on the tapping and stopping is $26,286. The next item is item 12I, and it is a contract with Pearson R.A. Construction for Phase One of the SRF-funded concrete and clay sewer line replacements. We have two separate areas that are going to be focused on with this particular portion of the project. One is an extremely deep brick manhole at the intersection of Florence Boulevard and Colindale Avenue, and the other is the sewer line along the railroad track between Marcell Road and Gresham Road. And those two areas will be completely redone and brought up to date as part of this project. And again, this is a SRF-aidened funded project. It's in the amount of $625,915.
Are you questions, Paul?
Where's the water tank going to be off of the old cross creek?
We're a couple of knots, they're complete, and it'll have to be disinfected and completely inspected, but we're still a couple of knots away from the new water tank on Cross Creek.
We'll get it closed.
Yeah, we're getting rid of it. Thank y'all, you.
Thank you. Brian?
Over one, then we've got three items here. Item F is payment of invoice with Ang electric in $488.50. This is for some work outside the Rosebaum House.
Do you have any questions, Paul?
Next item is item G, resolution with MG Roofing to clean the roof at the Rosebaum House. This is a preventative maintenance item that we'd like to have done this year. It's in the amount of $4,153. Next one is item H, this is removal of a tree at the Florence mound. This is a dead tree at the top of the mound, $1,500. It's creating a hazard for some of our visitors and presents an issue where it could come down, so.
All right, that's it.
My sister-in-law went to visit the Indian Valley to visit, to really do it.
I'm glad to hear it.
They were, I told you, the youngins go see that.
Yeah.
And they went, they were, I think, very pleasantly surprised that we have something like that.
You can have the actual. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
I have a few things tonight. The first one is item 11J, and that is a contract with the University of North Alabama in their Center for Learning. We will be hosting a training there for lead-based paint abatement workers and supervisors, and the Center for Learning will be handling all of the logistics for the training. So the registration of the event, they will also host the space, as well as any AV needs during the, the training, the five-day training. And it goes hand in hand with item 11K, which is a contract with the National Environmental Solutions Incorporated. They will actually be providing the instruction for the training. And this goes along with, as you saw from the memo, our Lead Hazard Control Grant. We have a shortage of trained professionals to do lead-based paint abatement, and so to remedy that shortage, we're going to train them here.
How many will be trained?
So we'll have at least six. We think it could be upwards of 11 workers and seven supervisory, but if they go through, whether they're a worker or supervisor, if they attend this training, they will be fully certified by the end of the training.
So what, how do we do outreach to, to, you know, create awareness to get them there?
So we are, this grant, excuse me, the applications for this grant, the homeowners, runs through Community Action Agency. So their personnel plus our personnel have been contacting contractors in the area that have a city of Florence business license, and letting them know that this training would be available and would they, would they like to attend. It is a free training, otherwise they would have to pay several hundred dollars per person just for the worker training, and if they wanted to be supervisory personnel, it's in the thousands. And we're offering that at no cost, being paid through the grant, to get them certified.
Can, is it already set, or can people still sign up for it?
Sign up for the training as a contractor? Yes, they could.
Okay.
As long as they are a licensed contractor.
Right.
And have a business license with the city.
Let's see, all right. Don't have any additional questions, Paul?
Okay, all right. So that takes care of items 11J and 11K. The next item, the public hearing, which is item 9A, and then its companion ordinance is 12A, we'll be having a public hearing for a rezoning at 4600 Chisholm Road. It's approximately 11 acres, and it will be rezoned to multifamily residential. We recently annexed this property into the city. The developer will construct 22 structures for a total of 96 units. This is only 51% of the allowable units on the acreage. It does conform to our comprehensive plan, and the planning commission does recommend the rezoning. Any questions about that particular case? Okay. The second one is item 9B and its companion ordinance is 12B, and that's the rezoning at 1920 Erskine Drive. This is approximately 42 acres, it's being rezoned to residential business. A portion of the property is already residential business, and this will take the bounce of the property to establish a discipleship school, which will accommodate approximately 10 students. The existing buildings and houses will be used for the school's activity, and there's no new construction being planned, and the proposal does conform to the city's comprehensive plan, and the commission does recommend the rezoning. Any questions about yet? Item 12C is an ordinance to approve the naming of an unnamed right-of-way, and this comes at the request of Colby Reynolds. The, the unnamed right-of-way, which is adjacent to 304 Laramore Street, would be named Major Latham Lane, and this is in honor of Major Matthew Kenton Latham, excuse me, who has a distinguished military service, as well as was a cadet in UNA's R22 program. And the portion, this road is actually on UNA's campus, but in order to name it officially, it requires action by the city. Any questions about that one? All right, and I believe that's it. I think Mr. Musgrove's going to cover the alleyway.
One thing, Melissa, I got the text today that one of the Florence first grant applications was completed. I'm assuming y'all have received that.
We have received it, and we will do the environmental assessment, which is required. It's just paperwork, and we should have an answer for that, that application within the week.
Good. And we're still waiting on the, the other?
The other one has not moved forward.
I'll follow up.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Musgrove?
I have four items on the agenda tonight. The first is item 12D, which is an ordinance to lease a portion of the sidewalk to a new restaurant, Rancho Mexican Grill, which is going into the building where 360 Barbecue was.
barbecue was. And the building department approved the, the plans, the layout of the sidewalk, of the sidewalk seating. And this, and twelve E goes along with that. And that's because the council, in order to allow seating in the right-of-way or on the sidewalk, has to approve, has to approve it under the zoning ordinance by resolution. And then the lease is simply something that the A B C board requires from the business owner in order to serve alcohol on the sidewalk outside of the actual structure. So that's why there are two. Any questions about that one? All right, thank you. And then twelve F is, is for the same thing. This is for Lost Pizza's outdoor seating. And the reason there's only an ordinance for a lease is because once the council approves the outdoor seating pursuant to the zoning ordinance, that does not have to be done again until the owner changes or they want to change the, the area that they're using. So this ordinance for Lost Pizza is required by the A B C board just so they can serve alcohol outside of the primary structure. And it's a renewal. They've had this, I mean, they already have been doing this. And then the last ordinance I have is for the vacation of a portion of an unopened alley between Poplar and East Mobile Streets. And, and then the block is bordered by North Cherry Street and North Poplar Street on the perpendicular to Mobile and Tom Bibby. This was approved by the Planning Commission. A person has bought both the lots on either side of the alley and I'm not sure what they're doing, but, but like I said, it was approved by the Planning Commission. The alley's not used.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I've got one item on the consent agenda, item, item eleven M. This is compensation for the absentee election manager for the City of Florence election coming up here in August and also would, would cover a runoff election also. It's compensation would be is fifty dollars per day for each day that the absentee election services are performed, starting with when we get the absentee supplies, absentee ballot supplies, and then covers all the way through on the day of the election. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, if I can correct something. I drafted this resolution for the co-adjunct and I didn't, and I, I had the sponsor mistakenly listed as the mayor and city council, and the sponsor is actually just Mayor Betterton. So we've corrected that.
Thank you.
And this is a follow-up from Mr. Warren's presentation to you. We heard from all the council members and they were, they were agreeable to move forward. Okay. All right, let me, let me also share, I wanna be sure you got your handy brochure. I left you in your box. And also the office is open for business up at the Kennedy Douglas Center. It's a busy space today. They had a great event for kids up there that's well received. So make sure it's the works, so, and I'm very pleased that we've been able to get all these events in our E proved system. So next year, we've got, we've got information, we'll be able to do a much, much easier job of working with, with the festival going forward.
Thank you very much. Four appointments. We've got two. What they, else was doing? How important do they want to?
We're checking on those and then we also have two other applicants that are coming out, applications.
Four?
For the seat up, but we're, we're gonna wait until the next. I was putting it out there to let you know.
Okay.
It would be coming up, but checking out to see.
Can you go ahead and send us a copy of those applications so we can read, read the diligence or whatever?
And we're also checking to see about these two, if they're eligible.
They want to be reported.
They want to be as well, but yeah, I'll send those to you.
Okay, so we'll take care of these two on the next meeting. Okay, if there's no other additional attention, we'll convene at five, five o'clock. Take a break.